All meeting, door. Ken.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Judy.
Here.
Troy.
Here.
Michelle has a excuse to absence. I'm here. Janet.
Here.
BJ.
Yes, sir.
Dennis.
Here.
Agenda for July 11th, 24th. Is there any amendments?
Um, yes, Ken, the sheriff has been trying to get into renewing his building permit. And since it's a renewable and not a brand new one, this is just me continuing what he's doing. And we would have that in there.
Yeah. Will that be old business?
Well, it's a renewal, so it's old business. New business?
We'll put it new business. We'll put number two, Ken. That's old business. Dee, Ken. Is there any more?
I have three, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include a discussion about a move out for Sheriff Showalter.
That's Dee. Jerry.
I would like to amend the agenda to include Railway Avenue.
Okay, that's F, Railway.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the agenda to include an RV camper at Helen Saunders.
And that would be G. Any others? Do I have motion to approve the agenda?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting amendments from June 13th, 24th. Do I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Seconded.
Uh, were you here at that meeting?
Uh.
If you wasn't here at that meeting, you can't make that statement.
I wasn't here at that.
You weren't at the last meeting?
Yes, I was.
You were? I swear I didn't see you sitting there. Be quiet back there.
Hi, Jack, Your Honor.
Council members, Judy Berry, Tim Patrick, and Troy Chambers.
My mistake. It was Julie that was gone.
Yeah, I got a motion. Do I have a second? Or did you second?
I seconded.
Okay. Quit interrupting the meeting, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Maybe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Pay bills.
Can I make a motion to pay bills?
Do I have a second?
I have a question, please.
Shoot.
Um, what is this ads in the paper for, um, July?
Maintenance.
That was for maintenance. It's been taken care of. Uh, it was, it was, wasn't, should have been there, but, uh, it was, so let's move on.
Well, I'm just wondering because I knew we had maintenance people, so I didn't know. Okay.
It was just in there, partly, probably my fault. Okay.
Oh, and there's one more, excuse me. What's this for? Um, a yearly fee, lease or roughing?
Judy, where'd you see that?
Well, it's right here.
That's, that's on a, on a Visa.
Oh.
Oh, well, that was supposed to get closed.
There's new balance of $15.
Then it's probably attached to some account, whether it's Amazon or something.
Let's see if I can find them.
It needs to go to tax for the account.
Okay, that's 62424 annual fee finance charge amount. Uh, I guess we're going to have to pay it, but let's get that sorted out. We're out of her name, one of the two.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. There's another person's name, but I think we can, I don't know. I guess things are still being charged. I guess we can't refute it, but we ask.
There's nothing that's charged on it, so let's just ask.
To close it?
If we can close it and save that.
Well, if you don't, it's going to keep happening.
Yeah.
For, yeah. That's why I was asking.
Okay, with the exception of, of that Visa, do I have a motion to accept the bills?
So moved.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clerk Crasher.
Okay, she passed along the accounts to me. Um, but they have the account numbers next to them, so a couple of these, I'm not sure if I might have them switched. The general account of ours is currently $5,461.57. Police account, 6776649. Community, 6715406. And Enterprise, 17097.89 cents.
Okay, a question, maybe you can answer. Julie, out of that $50,000, part of that goes back into the police account, if I'm not mistaken?
Part of it, we have to go for budget.
Yeah, so we need to all have her keep track of that and get on that so we can get the proper amount transferred back to where it goes. There was, oh, and, uh, me and her have also been talking, me and Michelle, have been talking about either switching water bills to a postcard where it's like seven cents cheaper or switching so everybody gets it or start it out online and people that want it online can get it there and slowly try to move, uh, everything online so then we don't have any postage whatsoever.
That's still in new business.
Oh, is it? I didn't, didn't think it got put in there well. There's, there's nothing, I don't think that we're going to, uh, be deciding on that tonight. It's just, I want you guys to think about it and maybe next meeting, uh, go into depth on it. Court, Janet.
All right. Uh, let's see, June, or May, sorry. Actually, I should say it's June. So payments received in May totaled $27,000, 39315. That has been, thanks to the town account, um, as of, I think, yesterday. All right. Let's see what the citations were and payments that have come in. Also included, the, this, um, for you guys, this, um, the collections report for the court. That does not include, uh, citations for people paid at the, at the stop. So we hold those until the next court date. And then the bench, because it's considered a line, not a, not a fine. So if they don't show up for court, then I run it through, and if they do show up, then we do like that. So, and the judge will sign this report at court next week. Also included, um, as part of that, the bank statement intended to transfer the outstanding for that 30, uh, $27,000. So court is next Friday, the 19th. We've got one bench trial scheduled and right now several columns. Um, we got approval for the Homeland Security grant, which is for communications equipment for the police department. That was preliminary approval for $10,077. Um, as soon as my own Homeland Security gets their notification of funding from the feds, then we'll get an official notification. Um, the one snagging at is that, my understanding is that from talking to, um, White dot, when they put the application in May for the, um, behavioral enforcement grant is that the town, there's a report that the town needs to get to the state. And so until that report is done, we can't get any grant money. So we may not, even though I awarded this grant, it could be a problem. So just so you guys all know. Um, I did submit documentation to that, um, and I'm in the public officer training. And I'll take that exam in a week or so. I thought I had until June 30th to take it, but it's actually a year from when I took on the duties of taking care of all the money. So, so there's a question there, but I'll, I'll make that done as soon as possible. And then the one thing that I need to add is that there's a financial report for the cops grant due on July 30th. And all the information from Julie will come to us all to be able to do that.
Guys, can I have you sit down, please?
I'm, I'm ready, thank you.
Go ahead, if you want to be a disruption to us at the meeting, that's fine. I, I would like to at the next meeting, uh, put an ordinance in that anybody attending the meeting can be sent and will be sent. And all block it up and see what we can do. BJ.
My, oh, okay. Well, the AC unit went out in my, the Crown Vic today, so it was a little bit of a warm, warm day for me. Um, I would like permission to like to look into a new vehicle. Um, I know we got a slip grant for the Explorers. I'd like to look into that one again to see what the price of a new vehicle would be to weed out the Crown Vic and then maybe get a new Explorer, then use a Charger as a, a backup vehicle. Um, seems like every time we drive the Crown Vic more than a day or two, it just kind of, something happens. So it'd be nice not to nickel and dime it to an old vehicle if we can get a grant or something for a, a new one. I know that slip grant was a 50/50 grant, but we can see if there's some other grants out there for police equipment. Um, I know in our budget for this year, we put in a 5% raises for the officers and Janet. Um, I just want you guys to consider that for us, please. Um, we put a lot of hours in, a lot of time, and, um, I haven't had a raise for about four years, so if we could just consider that for, for us, that would be great. I also know that, um, I just want to make sure that the retirement's getting paid and the insurance is getting paid. Is that all up to date and everything?
Insurance is automatic. I'd have to look at the retirement.
Retirement, I saw her send that in the other day.
Okay, okay. That can't be automatic or?
That's.
Okay.
Because you have to go and put a report in, then it generates the invoice, and then, then you gotta pay it.
Okay. And I just want to thank Janet again and Jeff for their hard work to get these grants going. It's kind of nice to get, uh, free money, you know, every time we get equipment for free, which is, I mean, probably 90% of our equipment's been paid by, by grants, so, um, and this, I mean, this grant coming up will get us new cell phones and boosters in our car because I think we're, I mean, the, the phones we have right now are probably eight years old. No, not eight years, I haven't been there long. Probably five years old. And then the technology world, you know, that's kind of not good. So I know Newman has a little bit of trouble, um, like being a hotspot for his phone to his computer, so this will be a, never, I think we're going to put a booster in the office as well, so it'll be nice to be able to, I mean, it's about safety and about communication, so like I said, I just want to appreciate them. Jeff and mostly Janet, because she did mostly the work, so. Every time we get almost 11 grand, it's grants, that's pretty nice, so. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I talked to the guy from the Farm Bureau Insurance the other day, and still, I'm still waiting to hear back about what they're going to cover your car. I don't know if they talked to Michelle or not. The Farm Bureau covers your car, and then the state liability pool covers the other, so. We're trying to coordinate between everybody and find the right accounting number version on that, so.
Okay, they have know that Michelle said she needed a report. Um, I talked to her this week, maybe in the last week, but she got that, so hopefully that'll take care of it, so. Because I know it's almost already done, so, well, that's like a week out, so.
Yeah, I dropped the report off last week.
Yeah. And then I put in a, um, a purchase order to get the windows tinted in the Crown Vic because it killed me just sitting in there with the windows as light as they are in the, in the sun. Um, so I have a guy that will do it for $300. He'll do like the back windows and the rear window at 5%, and then my, the front windows at 20%, which is legal. And he'll do it for 300 bucks, so the town would help me cover that. Great, if not, I'll pay for it myself because I'm not going to sit out there in the sun like that. And he's coming on Monday to do it, so.
And the, uh, the PLS.
Maybe he's coming Monday, it would be better to say.
Yeah. Any, any discussion on getting the windows tinted on the Crown Vic?
I know when I, something happened to my Charger window. Can't remember why I had to get that thing replaced, but one window was 120 bucks, so this guy will do the whole vehicle for 300, so. If I have to drive it for a couple of weeks, they'll.
I make a motion to pay for him to have his windows tinted in the Crown Victoria.
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
You can give me your $300, I'll take it.
Okay.
Split that.
Split it five ways?
Uh, I think it's two.
Yeah. Let's go with maintenance, water, and sewer. Before you start, I would like to thank you, Howard, and Randy. This town has never looked any better, and it's improving daily. And I want to thank each and everyone for the hard work you've been doing.
I agree.
Thank you. You're, uh, uh, as far as everything, no water problems, uh, no sewer problems at this point. Uh, you do have First Street in old business, so we'll talk about that there. Uh, last meeting, we agreed to go ahead and spend $8,000 to $10,000 in getting our park all straightened up and get it to look nice. Uh, we've got that project started. We've got our pipe in, all our parts in. We've got our sprinklers being, our sprinklers are ordered and going to be built. Yesterday, we got all the pipe glued together, um, got it in place where it's going to be, got all the low cades done. Tomorrow, we're going to go ahead and we're going to trench the pipe in. Uh, then we'll get it buried, and then we're going to have a community day. Uh, and I believe, do we have a sign sheet for anybody that wants to sign up to help on the community day? It will be on May 20th?
July.
Or July 20th. I think, did it 9 o'clock? Did you put the time on there? 9 o'clock. 9 o'clock.
There's no time on there, so.
All right, yeah, spread the word, guys. Uh, we can use all our, we get, we're going to have a barbecue afterwards. Uh, we will have hamburgers, hot dogs, potato salad, baked beans, chips. Yes, Sharon?
Ronnie didn't say he could use all those drinks.
Okay, good. Good. Uh, the other thing, the other thing is, uh, for those that are going to attend, uh, be sure to sign up so we know how much food to order and make that stuff. Number two is if you can bring shovels, um, bring gloves, bring mosquito spray, and bring a sweatband because it's going to be hot. Um, what we'll do that day is, is Howard and I'll have it all tilted up. Uh, we'll have everything ready as far as planting the, the grass and covering the trenches. Uh, McKens are going to bring down a load of straw and a load of manure. Uh, Jimmy McKen, so we'll dump that down here if we want to get it on there covered with straw once we get it on there. And then immediately get water when it's done. Um, and I believe that's it on my end of it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, can I make a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, they have done so much work in these parks, and they're green this year. And I'm in myself again. I have not, after the fracas over the park, I hardly see any children over there anymore. And the first few days, they were over there, but I don't ever see anybody over there. Maybe Sunday because I'm not around there, but Tim has been over there, Howard's been over there, there, Tim's there seven days a week putting water out. I don't see any children over there. Like they were, you know, like they were going to use it so much, and I think they should because they made it nice. So that's just my opinion.
Maybe once we get it looking good, they'll start using it.
Well, I've seen kids there a few days, but not a lot, but then also it's gotten kind of hot.
Didn't stop us from going to the park.
We were a different generation. We drank out of those too, so.
That's it.
Dennis. Anything to report?
Okay, water board votes again, week from today. Going through everything, go through on the water. Start that being approved to get your bills.
That's it? That's it. Come, come the, the 1st of January, early hiring, uh, replacing mine and the, the town of Basin ain't going to be doing it. You guys will be hiring people yourselves to do it. The, uh, clerical and the, the licensed. Didn't I read something in the paper where, where Basin was not going to?
And I can hear you, Ben.
Okay.
Well, I was just wondering, 1st of January, they're going to hire new people, uh, for clerk.
Yep. And they'll be on their own damn, you won't be going through Basin.
I don't know how this all going to work.
Yeah.
Okay. They're split with that other, with the other water district too, so I don't exactly know.
Right.
But that's, that'll be up. This will all be hired up tomorrow.
All right.
Next Thursday. Because they let a slide, and I'm not happy camper with that needed to be done before you guys, uh, July.
Yeah. So, okay, you answered my question.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll keep you posted after Thursday, what happens.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
All right.
Uh, East First Street. I got estimates on gold base. Uh, vigils don't have any gold base up here. It would all come out of well. And they charge by the ton. It's $8 a ton. The trucks haul 20 tons, so that'd be $160 a truck plus $120 an hour to and fro. So we're like at $360, $400. And the truck hauls about that. I can't, it seems like you said, but, um, so I, I'm always used to convert million yards on, um, soil.
Well, I recommend what we do, Mr. Mayor, is to counsel to yourself is let's see what, uh, McGarver's Motley did for gold base. They're a lot closer. I think we might be able to get that a lot cheaper. Pretty, that's pretty much out of, out of our league right now as far as that much money going to the.
We'll, we'll have to go to Big Horn right next because McGarver's Motley sold over there product rushers. So Big Horn's great, I guess it's the only one that's closest to us, but I'll check on that. For next meeting. Any more discussion? All right. New business. Mr. Night Building.
And as I explained to the, uh, your secretary, um, you know, I'm not concerned about the cabin right now. I'm more concerned about just getting the smallest timber frame, you know, pole horn type structure up just to house my stuff, uh, because of the property deed thing is dragging out fog on my water good. Uh, so, you know, that's my concern right now, not, not actually putting a cabin.
Okay. With, with, uh, violence and drawings in your place doing it.
Well, I, I, yeah, you're right. I did not do the, I don't have the cabin plan or, excuse me, the, uh, the, I don't have the plan in there for the little structure, which is, you know, 20 by 30 building, the, the timber frames on.
Okay.
Very simple, full water style.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking for.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the building permit?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, uh, you, you got an estimate for doing the bank reconciliations for, and there's about, you know, everything.
Uh, about a year and a half on one and one, two of them, and the rest are two years, Tim.
Okay, and, and he said of over $2,000?
Right, so the estimate I gave is if you go with the rate that you guys paid me to do stuff before, I'm going to have somebody I work with who's been on my team, still, you know, she doesn't have access to the books right now. Get her, give her access later, do what she'll do for the same rate rather than go through her business where she charges her $50 an hour. So.
How long do you think it's going to take?
Um, she's got two extra bookkeepers, so, um, I thought, I estimated it as like 72 hours. I don't know how hard they can get it, but we need to get it done because we need to get our September report done. And we need to catch up on some others, so it's important to get it done.
How far behind are we really, yes?
Some, so some of them that we thought the bookkeeper had done before. I, it was my understanding that she had caught us up and then was partway into 2023. And I found, while checking it out, that a couple of the accounts are back into, I think it's September, August, September, 2022, that they haven't been reconciled.
Why weren't they taking care of it in '22 and '23? Or '21 and '22?
Because they were already like two years behind. She thought she'd go back to 20.
So. So now we got to do all the catching up.
We got to do the catching up, and then the other two accounts are at, right at 1-1, 2023, so. And so I put in the estimate I gave, I put it out for per account because some of the accounts, like the, um, Canadian fund, we've got them. Uh, we've got 6.5 is the hours, I think, for what we need for that because they're quicker. We only have a limited amount of transactions. We know exactly what they are. There's, you know, very few, that would be really quick. Um, Enterprise, once, once we've kind of explained to them what's going in and out, that should be quick. Uh, police account, that's not too bad. The general plan is the one that's going to take the biggest hit because it's huge. We do so many transactions, everything from payroll to purchases to, you know, everything, so.
So where is this person located at that's going to do it?
Georgia.
Why do we want to go to Georgia?
Because we can't get any bank to buy, nobody wants us.
Okay, uh, let me take over here.
Okay.
I, I went to estimate, but keeping it for one. I, I went to estimate, but keeping it Portland and I talked to her. Uh, she listed on a bunch of reconciliations for all the company that she works for. And I told her we had five accounts and approximately two years on each count reconciled. And I, that's, that's the information I gave her. And she called me back the next day that she should be able to do a program and said.
That'd be great.
How long is it gonna take her?
It's gonna take her.
Two months, I believe. What's it, I can't remember now. If, if, what's now?
Cause the report that we've done needs to be done before the end of September. And we have to have the reconciliations done to get the report out.
Yeah, you told me that she said three weeks, three weeks, okay. I, I, I've been doing this much.
What you have.
That, that I just have to have time to have, if, if I said three weeks, it's three weeks. And she tells what she's saying when I work for her. And I, I, I can, where if there's any questions, go twenty miles face to face and get all the answers we need. So is there any discussion?
I just don't like sending a clerk to Georgia.
We don't send it.
They don't, it's all, it's all, we don't. But they don't, um, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable.
Okay, all that, so maybe make a motion about do we should hire?
Well, it's, it's, to me, it's all about dollars since right now, yeah. So I would go ahead and make a motion to go with this name for seven hundred dollars in three weeks. And get, like Julie said, it's gonna be done immediately, so it's getting done.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Kate Postcard, Potter, Bills, and we, we talked about that, that's just something we need to think about. And we'll talk about it more next meeting, see what everybody thinks.
And I make one note, so she has to return the bills into the bookkeeping anyway. The bookkeeping automatically produces the invoices, what's gonna produce for those cards?
Uh, that, that I'm going to have to like base and rate a little bit more, they're, they're computer generated. Uh, and they, they suggested that we go with send them email. That's, that's what they suggested. So, and, and then do concession programs, uh, where people can pay with credit card or check on the internet.
We have to collect them, uh, that, but they, they're gonna be, you know, so where's that?
Right, the, the rates, they charge us four ninety-five for checks, they can check over the internet. And I think it was ninety cents for a debit card.
Let me see what else we can get because license only charging as a percentage and it's one to three percent of the bill that they pay, which will be cheaper.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of, uh, what stamps, uh, by the way, did we buy any stamps or did we want to? We bought them the other day, wait. Okay, uh, D was, what was the, Kenwood, uh, Kenwood? Oh, build improvement or, uh, extension.
Yeah, basically, yeah, extending or renewing what it's been doing.
Yeah.
Do you have plans on file?
Okay, now do we charge them or?
Yes.
So do we wanna read in Kenwood's, uh, building permit?
I'll make a motion, go ahead, we do the building permit. We've had everything on for years, so it shouldn't have to be a change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Cows and cows.
I guess I'm the one brought that table, so, uh, sure, she'll also like to put a cow in her backyard.
Tim, sorry, she stopped me today and said she's not interested.
So that's the end of that? So that's all I got to say about that.
Okay, F, railway.
All right, guys, last meeting, uh, we approved eight to ten thousand dollars to new city park. Um, we're gonna be way under that, by the way. Uh, but we did, Rod and I designed this thing fifty times. And every time we designed it, it, a lot of things changed. But, uh, anyway, we ordered, uh, the pipe for our first design. Uh, we've got more pipe than we're gonna need. We're gonna be way under the ten grand that we're gonna spend on the park. Uh, I would like to bring to the council, uh, to take that extra pipe. We're gonna need two hundred more feet, uh, put it down the center of railway, uh, get rid of the pipe, the sprinklers. Get rid of all that right now for the simple reason that we figured out just on railway alone with the weed heat and putting the pipe out, picking the pipe up, replacing the sprinklers, fixing the leaks, wiring everything up. We're putting about sixty-eight hundred dollars a year in there. We can put that, the rest of that pipe and the sprinklers and everything and still stay under the ten grand that we was gonna spend on the park. But it's gonna eliminate all that whoever's maintenance guy next year. And it's gonna eliminate a lot of costs on that too. So I just wanted to bring that before the council to see what you guys thought if you wanted to do it. We're gonna have a trencher down here tomorrow, uh, we can get that trench in and get her done.
Lots of the wedding guys, we're talking about leisure, I think that's still more ready than it's been used.
But used, I agree. I agree, it's gonna say it was a lot of more time too, but, I mean, you know, all that stuff is very, very time consuming, very time consuming, very costly.
Any other discussion? Do I have motion to move some of that money from the park railway and get it then all the way on it? So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, Jean Helen, Helen Sommers come to me.
She'll be here anymore right now.
Oh, she don't wanna do that either?
Not, not at this time, it's gonna be pushed off a little bit longer.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you guys are only gonna be honest.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
But, but that's something we need to discuss somewhere down the line in the future. It doesn't have to be behind, um.
You know, we just bring it up to the council so they can, they can, they can, if we can talk for another meeting, but, uh, there, what, what you wanna do is put a RV in there, move into the RV, hook into the seven tank, tie it to the water. Uh, I have no problem with that because it's not changing the situation. There's still seven people, there's seven people still using that seven. If it was a new home or a new mobile home, I would, would say, um, you need a new setting. Uh, but it's not, so most of those would be very temporary. Uh, so it's something to think about for, for when it does arise on, you know, whether we're gonna, and the other thing that, you know, think about this, maybe you charge them instead of, you know, spending seven to ten thousand dollars on water and sewer, maybe we, we add in, uh, we, we bill them fifty, sixty bucks versus having them put into new water, making sewer and, and water and all that stuff. Uh, so something to, to kick around, guys, uh, to think about.
Okay, moving on. Mayor's comments, I have none at present. Public comments?
Um, I would just like to question why us standing back here is now the a disturbance?
Yep.
Standing back here for ten months? And now we're second ones, you guys asked us to sit and said it's a disruption? And I just would like to, to know.
It's a disruption to me when I'm looking out at the audience. I see the audience sitting, two people here standing. Uh, I wanna run my meetings uniformly. It, it's just better if people are sitting down. Uh, that's, that's the way we used to do it and that's the way I plan on continuing it.
So it's preference instead of an actual disturbance where it's halting the meeting or preventing it from continuing?
It, it's disturbing for us looking across the crowd, seeing two people way up here and people sitting down. It, it's just what we've done in the past and it's what I plan on institute in the future.
So it is a personal preference?
No, it, it's, it's not just up to me, it'll be up to this whole board.
But then why isn't it a problem now? But it hasn't been for the past ten months where we.
It, it has been and I started enforcing it. Uh, if it's just disruptive, I'm not one to sit here and argue about it. Uh, there's no reason to. If, we'll, we'll bring it to the board next meeting. If they agree with it, that's what we'll do. I will give a ruling from the attorney and see if we're legal to do it. And that's the way we'll move on. It's nothing against nobody. Anybody that comes in will be asked to, to be seated.
It seems a little rough since we, it has been, I think no one's mentioned it before.
Well.
So I wasn't trying to argue, but I would like clarification, so.
Yeah. I agree.
What?
Do they allow people to stand in basin and drag them? They do, so it's, it's more or less a?
Personal preference.
A, a preference of the body.
Is it never come up, people stand up all the time when there's a certain law to go?
Well, and.
That might be different for you.
Yeah, and, and basin, they used to never have any room but to stand.
Um, actually, and there's, they do stand.
Now.
Standing, no, they, in old office, there'd be a bunch of people around the door.
That's, that's what I was saying, they had an old room to sit.
You, you said stand nonsense, so that's all, you gotta, that's what you threw me off. I was like, yeah, they did, no. But people stands in front.
Yeah, well, we'll decide, we'll decide that at next meeting, it'll be on the agenda. Any other public comments? Council comments? Do I have motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
It's not, oh, I didn't see it. Do we need an executive session?
Yes, please.
Okay, it is.
State through some things.
Purpose?
Personnel.
Personnel?
Personnel.
Okay. We're going to executive session at, uh, seven fifteen. Meetings back in session at twenty after seven. Uh, we decided, or we talked about giving Michelle a few extra hours. Uh, do I have any discussion about that? Do I have motion to give her a few extra hours?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.